Any online, although there isn't anybody but Ed right now will be able to hear you. And so that the recording picks it up. If you don't speak into the mic, the recording isn't picking anything up, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you. And with that, we will call the meeting in order. Please roll call.
Uh, Covert?
Rose.
Hill?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Heatley?
Here.
Cardy?
Here.
Alded?
Here.
Marsh? Phillips?
Here.
Kowalski?
Yeah. All right. Next up, we have action on the minute. Oh.
Hamlin.
Oh, sorry, student rep. Yes, thank you. You're welcome. Um, thank you. So, okay, action on the minutes from the regular meeting of June. Can we have somebody move the minutes?
So, okay, I'll second.
Okay, move Cardy, support Roberts. Any changes to the minutes? All in favor of the minutes as posted? Say aye.
Aye.
None.
Minutes are approved. Next up, approval of the agenda. Can we have someone? Oh, sorry, Michelle?
Can we slow down just a little bit?
Sure.
This is the first day our new, uh, recording secretary is taking.
Usually I'm just.
Taking the minutes, so I can write fast, but she's typing, so if we give her a little grace today.
Yes.
Um, this is Beth.
Thank you. Yes, welcome. Should have introduced. Thank you. Okay, so yes, um, but can we have someone move the agenda now?
The move.
All right, move Hills, support Heatley. Any changes to the agenda? additions? Being none? Okay, all in favor of the agenda as posted? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None. Okay. The agenda is approved. So we have one public hearing tonight. Um, first up is the Housing Readiness Amendment to the 2019 Master Plan. Quite a good packet on this one, so a lot of good information. Thank you. Um, I guess we'll go to probably machine. We're going over there somewhere first.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Jenna.
Um, so we released our master plan for the required forty-two day, um, period. Um, and we received some comments which are located in your packets. Um, but at this point, I'll turn it over to Megan to, um, go through the presentation of, of the conference of, uh, the, the update of master plan.
Thank you.
Evening. I'm going to ask them to run a little bit of planning comments. Um, and the presentation is getting about time and, um, we don't have a lot of public here tonight, so, um, I think they like most of the video, a lot of things that will go over as well time, maybe a brief. Um, but in our presentation content tonight, what we want to go over was what is the master plan, why it is now, process, changes by chapter, and comments for adjacent communities, and then steps for adoption. Um, and basically, the master plan is the city's vision and how to get that. Through changing ordinances, um, putting together future land use. Um, and one of the challenges you had, um, in this, you know, in your update, um, was looking at things that they changed over the past five years. So, by the Michigan planning, are we supposed to examine the master plan every five years? Um, and look to whether it needs to be updated or not, and you updated yours last in two thousand and twenty. Um, so we are due, and, um, there are kind of changes, uh, how in the past course that occurred. Um, there have been some proposals on second street. They revised zoning orders and subdivision for the series of multiple in the P V's that really, you know, they use a body rest of it, but also city council. Um, and also, there came available, uh, grant through the state, uh, housing revenue, and that affordability of housing, quality of housing, um, and community character, and pension points, and so they invite that random, uh, so, so. Sub need. And pick it go for two more slides. Process. Thank you. This is the process that is used, um, while we were connected back here with city council about a little over a year ago. Um, we did some background studies and updates, the things that purple are, um, the engagement events, there was a listing question about what was the character? Did a scientific survey on, and then also there's industry flockings more that many of you participated in and seen the public. Then looked at housing in adjacent communities, um, drafted the master plan, and now we're here at, uh, the adoption of the amendment. Go to the next slide. Um, would like to do is walk through chapter by chapter, what the changes are. Um, in terms of chapter one introduction, tested sort of context, just said that two thousand and nineteen master plan happened, this was the new amendment. Um, the planning process graphic that was serious gets updated, little different than what it was the last time, and also, um, describe those things in terms of public participation. In the next chapter, existing land use and confusing plans, um, the, the same age map changed with a bit. Um, mixed use categories added and also, but yeah, not yet, not yet, conservative category was, um, inserted as well. The text was pretty jumbled in terms of safe plans by terminology and. Add warnings, um, and then also, they look at, um, stat, the adjacent municipalities plans, summarize those and, um, refresh any update and any web, any web links. On the next slide. Um. There were some needy changes in chapter three, um, with a picture of First Street Park because an objective was added on First Street Park. I mean, out of that walking, the walking tour for second street, there are changes to the residential objectives based on discussions that the planning commission, public had about the needs and what came out of the survey in terms of really their, that people felt that there was a need for more portable housing, it had moved that forward. Also, there were goals and objectives drafted for a new interlaid this category, which would be second street. The intent of that category is that it will be from a form-based district, filling something, um, and so then we have that thing. Approach that you have on Baker, and then you have on National and Harbor Road, but it's a different focus because of the residential character and the blocks and the size of that street. Go to the next slide. In terms of future leaves, as I said, we have in the goals and objectives for, uh, second. Um, second street, now that is put on the map, and also, um, some parameters around it have a little bit. Um, also for planning, and for property outside of the city limits was changed. And I've had a little, I'll go into more detail about that later on in the presentation. But also the zoning plan, which is a air dominant from state law, was updated to your zone. So, a lot of those notations in that table really changed. Go to the next slide. Thank you. First slide is what that second street district would be, um, in terms of what type of, what type of uses and what type of building. Um, and really, it's, as you've discussed, that residential is supposed to remain the same on, um, the southwest side and on the northeast side. Those get those bigger parcels ready, uh, to be reused for a variety of things, um, from multiple family all the way to artisan manufacturing. Um, and there to allow flexibility, allow the building that are there to be reused, but also for those properties to be redeveloped. Also, looking at that side of where the residential lots are, um, the southeast side, for those to be residential, for those to allow attached houses as well. Um, and looking at that as an opportunity. We go to the next slide. There were a lot of changes in mobility or transportation chapter, basically the maps were updated. Please go to the next slide. There were a lot of changes or are a lot of changes proposed in the background studies, mainly the twenty twenty census came out. Twenty fifty sound code protections, so we crafted on that, but there was also a justice on calling, um, and looking at data on that, including the studies that have done through the T D A's, um, updating up there. Go to the next slide. And finally, and implementation, um, work implementation chart table got a little short, um, because you've been very effective and efficient in the past five years. Um, but there's still some left work to clean out there for you. You can go to the next slide. Um, in terms of comments from adjacent communities, you've got comments around your adjacent communities who, um, have some concerns and will refer staff about those, uh, if they will describe in the packet. Um, about how the language has changed the approach, um, for dealing with if the cities well, if it's for a fixed medium, and what mechanisms to use. So, to the next slide, in terms of steps for adoption, you've been following hearing tonight, um, and I'd love to see the public come and comment on the draft. Um, you are supposed to shoot those buttons then, also, um, which are the, you know, for some reason communities, uh, and then maybe your adoption of the master plan, or you can ask staff and hills to say, we need to change this a bit, um, or a lot, um, and then, um, look then come back for you to approve it, and by the state law, again, you approve it, and the city council also then has their final approval. So, we just want to, I was just going to say also, thank you for the opportunity to work with you and work on housing, um, it's something that's really important and needed in the state. Um, and we feel like the city director, um, could be a leader in this, and, um, hope to be a part of that. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Okay, Seth?
Thanks, Megan. Um, so really, you know, as we went through, um, quite, quite a few changes, especially in chapter six, that, that whole chapter was rewritten. Um, and, uh, we have some motions for you to consider, um, on page five of your packet. Um, the first one is for it to be adapted as proposed. Um, the second one is adapted, uh, with, and, um, recommended option to city councils, sorry. Um, subject to the following modifications, and then motion three would be to postpone. Um, I'm welcome, I'm happy to go into more detail about the comments that were received if planning commission desires that. Um. But as Megan stated, they, they were also in your packets.
Thank you. Um, so I guess I don't want any questions necessarily for, right now, so I think maybe we could just go to the public hearing for right now, and then we'll have some discussion among planning commission. So, um, at this time, we will, it's seven thirteen, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody here would like to step forward, state your name and address, and speak to the, uh, housing readiness amendment? And we'll, seeing anyone here, nobody online. Give it a minute.
There's only one good person.
It's a cat.
Yeah.
Uh, Matt, may I?
Yes, please.
Ms. Engel, did you have any questions or comments you wanted to make? You're the, basically the only virtual attendee tonight.
Uh, no, I'm, uh, thank you for asking, but I'm, I'm just here to observe and, uh, see what happens here. I did read the com, I read most of the report and, and do appreciate your help, but it's just something I'm interested in, so. That's it.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for your interest. Okay, well, um, let's see, at that, it's seven fourteen, so, um, not seeing anyone else with a hand raised. We will close the public hearing. Um, so at this time, as staff said, we do have some motions in our packet, would we say page five? Um, this would be to move the, uh, for us to approve the master plan amendment, move it towards city council. Yes.
Did you want to have a discussion before you make your motion, or did you want to just make the motion and then have your discussion?
Well, usually we have discussion after the motion, but if.
Okay, make sure.
Yep, no, no, but thank you. But I'm flexible. If somebody has a motion, that would be great. Um, it's at page five of this. We can ask additional questions of staff, with a consultant as well?
I'll jump, I'll jump in. Unless somebody else hears.
Looks like it's all you, Mr. Earl.
In accordance with P A thirty-three of two thousand and eight, as amended and in consideration of the information provided by staff and C W A and the written comments received during the required review period, the planning commission moves to recommend adoption of the twenty twenty-five master plan amendment as presented to city council. It happens to be motion number one, if you're reading.
Okay, move Hill.
I second.
Okay, seconded out. Is there a discussion?
I have a couple of questions. There are eight questions.
Yes.
I'm curious to know what the comments were from the adjoining.
Like staff's reaction to kind of those comments. Because I didn't think, so sorry, Mr. Earl, I was going to kind of jump in a little bit, but that's where I was going to ask that follow-up question as well, is like what? If you felt, I didn't feel like there was a big need to, for the planning commission necessarily to respond, but. I'll let you answer that.
Sure, I mean, so specifically, they pertain to the, um, planning, uh, for properties outside of the current city limits. Uh, the language was changed specifically, um, uh, basically stating, and, and this was something that city council had directed, um, staff and planning commission to, to adapt into the, the language. Um, but basically, to change it from, um, coordinating with the township itself for, for annexations, um, to coordinating with the landowners, property owners. Um, so that was something that, you know, from what I gather from these, uh, from these emails, these correspondences, was something that, that the townships didn't like. Um, and are requesting that they be, uh, changed, the language be changed back to where it is. That's my understanding.
Yes, I'm so, I believe you.
Sure. Um, so, the, the language we had, um, could be, originally, we had, um, could be misleading, depending on how people read it. It could mean that the two municipalities come together and decide that they want annexation to happen. Um, so the council felt that, uh, the conversation we had, we felt that, um, that was not clear, that there are, for example, right now with, uh, former Sloan Kingsley property, it's a private property, the property owner has put an application at front of Dexter, right? Um, so there was nowhere in that the intention was that we don't have a conversation with municipalities if this happened. It was to clear that the beginning of it is not municipality to municipality, it's with the landowner who decides to come. Sometimes the landowner might be the municipality, sometimes the landowner is a private owner. Um, so with that, I don't think there's, and, um, I understand why, in my opinion, I understand why the municipalities chose to write that letter. Uh, but there is nowhere in what we are putting, that there is no intention of having conversations with them. Any annexation eventually will lead to have a conversation with, um, with, with municipalities, should they decide to do that in to go a little bit further, in the case of, um, former Sloan Kingsley, um, property, we actually had a committee from the city of Dexter, myself, um, council member Hubbard and Sammy Faro were part of that committee. We met with Syo Township a few times. Um, they chose to write a resolution that they said that they will decline to have any communication with us um, until we make a decision. Um, so they, we had communications with them, they stopped the communication in this annexation, um, themselves. So, it was a little bit interesting to receive that, that letter from them. Um, but again, there is to, I, I feel there is no, like, there is no intention of saying that we don't have conversations with municipalities in any process of annexation that will happen anyways.
Great, that really helps. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, as someone's been around here a while and, and gone through this a few times, I, I, I fully, uh, support, well, it's not my role to support, but I, I totally agree with council in the, in the respect that that is the correct path anyway. The landowner is, is, the path is through the landowner to the municipality, it isn't like, as you said, unless the, 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 unless Syo owns the property, that's not the, that's not the right path anyway, otherwise we would have like, a, a community planning somebody else's property, and then what, sending them a letter, here, here's your, here's your site plan, now we're ready to go, so. Uh, that makes perfect sense to me. Thank you.
Yes, this, thank you. Yes, Tom, thank you. And does that answer your question?
Oh, yes, it does. Correct.
Awesome.
I, I, I haven't been through this process. It usually, does the, uh, you know, the jurisdiction that is from which we're annexing something, do they have to give some sort of approval? No.
Or do we want staff to?
So, when a property, in this particular case, the property owner came to the city, that's one option. Um, per the research that I've done through, um, licensing and regulatory agency, um, the property owner, because there's less than one hundred people living on the property, can simply go right to the boundary commission. And then get a resolution of support from the city, because the reason for coming in is the extension of water and sewer. In this case, and has been in most cases where we've annexed or annexations have occurred, so, um.
Do they become hostile?
I'm sorry?
Do they become hostile? I mean, I'm thinking, but, but, you know, well, how will I feel, you know, and how, how would we feel if somebody sort of decided to annex? Yeah, something back.
They might. People in those communities might be upset that they don't have a mechanism for, um, I don't want to say having their voices heard, because there's always a mechanism for having your voice heard, but there isn't a mechanism for changing the law. At least not in a very timely manner. And all of this is set out in law, and it's a, it's a common law. I mean, it's a general law township, not a chartered township. Um, not that they'd have any more protection just because they're chartered, but, um, as some, some communities have felt more comfortable being chartered, but there's still a list, I think it's nine criteria, um, that have to be met in order to be able to even be considered. We're chartering now, so it, it's a, it's a, okay.
Yeah, it's the process.
Yeah.
We all have, we have to learn by.
Covert? Yes.
I have a couple of things I want to ask about and talk about. I'm like many of you at the table, I'm old enough to remember when the county had a planning group, and the county had, um, done a number of studies that pointed back to central place theory with regard to development and growth. And that got abolished when they came up with the report and said the best places to develop are around the existing cities, Ann Arbor, Celine, Chelsea, Dexter, Ypsilanti, because there's infrastructure there, infrastructure is easily extended. Once that got abolished, it was my perspective, based on working in many of these communities, that a bunch of the townships went in and downzoned all these properties so that you couldn't build, develop, you couldn't build density or extend utilities and all those kinds of things. The state and the Lake Isabella case then came up with this notion that you could do package treatment plants and all those kinds of things. I think it's a real missed opportunity that we don't develop densely near our urban centers within this town. I think Dexter has a big opportunity to develop with density around its, with smart growth and all those things around where infrastructure exists. You know, utilities, roadways, all those kinds of things. We lost an opportunity, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago, anybody remember how long ago it was? We, we missed an opportunity to have some growth and have affordable housing that, you know, turning over housing stuff and those kinds of things, so. I think it's important that we, as a city, continue with, um, a thought process that looks at what's best for us and what our growth practices are going to be, and how that works, and I think, I think the way this has been spelled out in the master plan is great. Second thing, um, unfortunately, I wasn't here the last time this was discussed at the planning commission. And I was looking at the fut- future land use plan for the second street, and I think if I heard correctly, the notion is that second street gets this mixed use designation, and then eventually we'll have to set up a form-based code for this area. In the meantime, well, let me ask this, about how long before we think we're going to have form-based code for that, if all this moves forward?
So, staff's intention is to have Carla Wortman provide a proposal for, um, doing that update to the zoning ordinance, so that we can create that, and provided that city council is amenable and is okay with it, we'll move forward immediately.
So if the master plan gets approved with this mixed, mixed use district, and that's probably a six to ten month process?
Depends on how quickly the planning commission wants to move it forward. Remember, between April and now, we moved pretty quickly.
Yep.
To get our master plan finished. So if we are committed to being detailed, but in a quick fashion, we might be able to do it quicker.
So, what would happen in the meantime with this master plan that's mixed use, and somebody comes in with a development proposal for rezoning? Would you, do you have something in mind that they might?
I, I believe that between staff and Carla Wortman, we could come up with something proposed to the, both to an applicant as well as planning commission and council, that could eat, it could reflect the work that's been done or the master plan, so that you get a development in that reflection.
And if I heard correctly, Megan, I think she stated that the goal is for the southwest side of second street, where we're changing the designation of a bunch of single-family homes to this mixed use, that that would stay single-family or?
That would stay single-family, it would force the ability to be, and attach some more families, whether that would be a duplex or, um, up to four units attached. And if we're using the form-based code and the building types that we have now, then for an attached single-family of, uh, for groups of like townhouses, somebody would probably have to assemble two to four lots in order to do that.
Yep, and then with the alleys on that side of the road, do we see the alleys staying?
Those alleys.
Instead of being big?
Yeah.
No.
And but, the plan's not specific about whether the alley should stay or not, if that is something you felt strongly about, that might be something to add. Um, because some development might leave that alley, if you're thinking about parking or whatnot.
Hmm.
I guess personally, I would want the alley to stay because it gives two points of act ingress egress. Um, and it's important, I think, for those blocks. But initially, and I apologize I missed that meeting, my reaction was, oh my gosh, we're taking the natural delineation of use being the roadway, and putting it into the blocks, the residential blocks. Um, should we look at making, continuing with the roadway being the delineation between the use types? But I think what we're saying here is that the use type will be largely the same, single-family duplex, maybe, maybe a fourplex kind of townhouse thing. Um, and then I was thinking, if that's the case, then all those folks in those blocks that are behind those lots, is it a side yard to them, or is it a rear yard? I think it's a side yard. So if I develop on second street, I can build my unit within seven feet. The back of my unit's within seven feet of one, two, three, four, five, six neighbors, where that wasn't a concern before.
I, I think that's an excellent point, and we can, we, what we could do is work that out, those technical details when doing that zoning district to account for, this is an unusual circumstance where you, the lots are horizontal to the road instead of vertical in some ways. Um, and so I think what we would need to do is to look at that, we might actually make a different site type, um, there to help with getting the right step back.
The right form.
Right, right, in order to keep the form base in the road, um, but also does the protection that people have come to expect by yards.
Yeah, and if I could just add that, that, that was my impression is, as well, is that like, that detail. Yeah. And if I could just add that, that, that was my impression is, as well as that, like that detail about the setback. Yeah, those are eventually the concerns. Because you're right, it changes that nature.
Right.
But I was thinking, we have our general form and concept that we're all okay with in the use, or at least it generally seems like we are. And then, right, when we get into that form base, that's when we're going to get into it. Yeah, like this, because you're right, the lots are different. They're laid out, right, length, or whatever you said, yeah, pair, they're, they're not perpendicular to the road. So it's, it's a different land use pattern. It's also going to make it tough to develop because they're not very deep. So I'm not sure how you could really get much on there, but we shall see.
My next point. Why would we change those if we don't think that they're going to be developed in a manner that we think would be appropriate?
Well, I think there could, I mean, I don't know, my.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that a different way. Why don't we move that line two more lots to the southwest, to the midline? Why don't we move with the full block?
Because it's aren't on second street.
I mean, I'll admit I didn't.
But the dimension is important. And they are not on second street. What are they all 99 deep?
True, looks pretty.
So, so the ones that are alley to road are about, are there 200 feet? And then you can see where a number of those have been split because they had the frontage and everything. And still met the sodders. I, I, I just, in order to get a development on that, I think it would be very difficult. But I think it works still for single family and duplex. So that's something that gets resolved in form. And, and when I looked at this, I was envisioning a three-story, single-family stacked development on those lots. But in what I heard was that the form for the southwest would be single-family or duplex style, maybe townhouse.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, we gotta figure that out. Tom, and I know Michelle, you had something to add as well, but Tom, did you want to?
Does it make sense to remove the, uh, the block on the southwest from, from the, the, this? Yeah, just remove it entirely.
Keep it, uh, village residential one? Does that allow duplexes still?
I know.
I, I, I think that might make more sense than, um, kind of working around your concern here.
You could leave this as is and then look at those technical details at the time that you're doing the zoning ordinance and we can work in still.
I don't feel strongly about it. As far as I'm, there's up to you.
I, I think I heard from everybody, well, most people here, that the intent is, what's important and that we can move forward. I think either way, I, I'd like to see duplexes built there. I, what I don't, wouldn't like to see is somebody to try to, buy both sides of the alley and then build something like a bunch of townhouses fronting there. Um, seven feet off of those six neighbors.
Right.
That just doesn't make sense. It's, we, we just moved the problem we had. Or at least what I perceived the problem we had with the properties on the northwest, one more lot. Over. So I, I could go either way. To me, it's, it's satisfied that we can fix, likely fix it through form or we can remove them.
Yeah, I think I would tend to leave it. I, I, I like that it creates the opportunity for additional residential, but I agree, it's a real challenge. Yes, Michelle?
I'm having trouble. You'll have to forgive me. I'm having trouble figuring out, where it's a side yard. Are you presuming that the front doors are facing second street or not facing second street?
I think all, most of those lot, well, basically, most of those lots, let's take Dover Street. You see the end of Dover Street? There's two lots that are half acre in size. I'm assuming their front doors are going to be on second street.
Right.
So they have a front on Dover and a front on second. Is their rear opposite second or opposite Dover?
So, um, front yards, I'm sorry, corner lots in the city have always had two front yards and two side yards. And when you're talking about like a duplex or two family, it's a seven foot setback on one side with a combination of 17. The way I interpret that is not only, on a corner lot, that's, that 17 feet, between the two is what's ever behind it. Dover. And the seven feet.
What, so. Using those two lots, what is the setback from the alley?
The alley has a seven foot setback.
Okay. And then the other property one also has a seven foot setback.
Right.
So, it would be conceivable that, all those lots, or those two lots in particular, could have four units that face second street and have access, seven feet from those one, two, three, four, five, six neighbors now.
So all along second street you're talking about. If, you could create a mechanism where if there's seven feet and it's a side yard for that combination, where's that other house on that other lot? So that you get that 17 feet combination, not just.
Be 17 between both houses.
It could be that, or it could be 17 in combination on. It would be however we would, you would want that to reflect everything.
Yeah. And again, I think you could work this out with some technical details because you could say, I'm thinking that house in terms of, if it has two front edges, we could actually sketch out and have a guy still clear the front yards and the side yards of eight. Um, using that type of scenario specifically for second street or if that's something that is still, so I think that, that could happen in a few other areas. Just to be more specific about where that, that backyard, because I think I really need to move, let me push your work in that. The concern is that all of a sudden, these folks would be seven feet from here.
Uh, if, if I'm building a townhouse there, typical developer.
Yeah.
I'd like my nice townhouse, then I'd like my patio off the back with my sliding door, room for my, you know, zero gravity chair. My barbecue, whatever, seven feet doesn't sound like a lot.
And again, I think, the master plan is supposed to be general, it's supposed to set up options. You don't have to take every option that's in the master plan. Um, again, we can work a lot of these things out. So the, the one thing that I hear from you that I would hit is the closure of the alleys. That would, that I feel should be emphasized in the master plan, we feel like that should. Because you might get a development that.
Yeah, I don't.
To span those two blocks.
Think we've ever discussed that. I would never even.
So the only thing that you have discussed as part of alleys is the consideration. Um, but this is a future implementation. And that is the closure of alleys. Um, or not closure of alleys, I'm sorry, the conversion of alleys from an alley to a street for frontage purposes.
Right.
City. Closure of alleys, the last time that was tried was back in the, let me say, 2006-ish? I definitely know it was tried in the nineties. There might've been one in the two thousands. It failed miserably. Um, yeah. And city council is not, has, has a position of not closing alleys.
Yeah.
Especially considering that there is infrastructure in.
Right, that's the case. I don't think it's even on the table. I mean, we can emphasize that language, but I don't think we'd ever consider closing it. Not to mention, again, infrastructure access. If anything, we're thinking about intensifying some of the uses off of alley. So. Yes, Mr. Covert, do you?
The engineers I work with tell me all the time that the details matter. So I'm gonna ask one more question. Those lots on the corner are about 100 feet wide. In form-based code, what's our front setback typically? 20, 15, 20?
Depends on the type of building. It depends on the form. So.
I think it's 15. And then I take another seven feet away, that leaves a 78 foot floor plate. It's not too bad. Kyle could do all kinds of things in 78. Do all kinds of things in 78 feet. You could get a detached garage. But, the 65 wood? Depth wise or width? Yeah, it's front to back, front door to back door. I'm fine either way. I appreciate the assumption. You gotta think 50 feet deep, wanting to tell them wide, right there at 1,000 square feet. So that, you know, that's a. So if you have 15 front, you could have a 20 foot back and still get a 60 something foot. But doesn't feel too bad.
That's on a multiple.
Michelle, did you want to add something?
That's on a multiple family building form. If you're looking at an attached residential townhouse, um, there is no minimum lot size, lot width. And there's a maximum lot coverage though of 80%. The building envelope for, um, for this type is, five feet, maximum 15 feet for the front yard setback. Three feet for the minimum, no maximum. Side yard combined is three.
I, I, and then I just come back. It might be wishful thinking to build, being, building something there to accommodate stormwater and all those kinds of things. So. Again, I'm fine either way.
Challenge. Okay, I think, but no, I think that, thank you for bringing that up, Tom. That's a good, another reason why second street's unique. The layout of those lots and, and it's going to be a challenge with the form-based code. But, um, other questions, comments? Discussion, yes.
Some questions.
Yes, please.
What, this is in the discussion of adjoining jurisdictions. What is a service district and is it the same as an annexation? I didn't get what.
For utility cert?
Yeah, that, they, they've, um, I think it was a consultant for SIO said, we usually see, the discussion of service district. And I thought, is that like a precursor to annexation? We're talking about service and like city, infrastructure into a different jurisdiction. Is, what is it? That's my question.
So let me re, for context, in the letter from SIO, it says foremost, it's noted, this section of the master plan amendment, has not been coordinated with a map of potential areas outside of the current city limits that may be planned for municipal service expansion and annexation. Typically a quote, growth service district quote, or unquote, or quote, urban service district quote. Map would demonstrate specific areas or properties associated with potential municipal service ex- expansions. I think that's what you're talking about. Um, I'm presuming that the terminology that SIO has used is one that they are, it, um, have experienced. When the, when the idea of planning outside our own boundaries was first talked about back in 2019 when we did that plan. Having a map that would delineate where those properties would be was not something that planning commission or council, felt was needed. And they still feel that way now. Um, so while, um, SIO may be more comfortable with terminology and a map, uh, for them, it's not something that the city of Dexter, agrees with, would be the best way I could put that.
Okay.
I think as far as having a map and calling it those terms.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle.
Um, okay, I have, um, is there any, um, mechanism for somebody from planning, maybe one of us, to work with Parks and Rec about first street, second street, whatever that, no, first street park, I mean that, they've, they want to do something with that park and we, we're, and we wanted to, we want to see something with that park, but I don't, see, you know, where we are talking at all. And some of it might be streetscape to that park. So people want to walk down there. Cause I, it's not that nice to walk down there, really. Um, it's so is there, I, I don't know, I, you know, I'll volunteer to work with someone. If you could get some coordination on that. Cause we've been talking about, oh, that's, you know, the wasted jewel and Dexter and so on and so forth. Then it's, it's been the same conversation for.
It's a good question. So is there, I mean, like, what's the parks? I admit, I don't know what the parks exactly is doing with that.
So I think they're currently going through their, um, park and rec plan update at this moment. We can check out with Josh, the assistant city manager. He's the liaison to parks. Find out where they are in that process, what they desire for first street park. Bring that information back to you and, um, um, and see where there is potentially an opportunity to,
Gordon.
For that conversation to, to initiate and potentially move something forward.
Okay, I think it would, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah, community park is a model, it involves a lot of paving.
Okay, one, on page 98, there's discussion of using Ann Arbor area transit authority, planning to provide service for Dexter. And the, the, the language in, in that our plan says they're going to be starting that up in 2019. Did, I mean, I'm, so I'm assuming that was cut and pasted from somewhere. Is there any effort in that direction?
I'm not exactly sure where it's, what, do you know what page that's on?
No, wait, um, yeah, page 98. Man, I'd love it if there was some effort in that direction, but I just wondered.
I don't think there is, but there may have been at that time. That was one of the areas that didn't get changed, but you bring up a good point. That if it has, it, if it's planned, hasn't started. Let's look into seeing what that is and fix that line.
Okay. And then I think my last question is, okay, I'm just going to say this, we refer to the traffic problems in Dexter all the time. If, are we, is the city, and it's just so easy to say, what do you know, somebody else's work, coordinating with the schools because, when, when school's out, Dexter is a country town. And then school comes in and it is horrible traffic, both ways. You know, parents driving one or two children to school and then going home again. And, and then traffic is a real problem. And I hate for us to try to figure out how to build some roundabout around the city. And won't be these bus drivers. And it, you know, it's just solving the wrong problem, I think. And, I just want to say that because I will probably say it again, 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 until you're all sick of hearing it. But anyway.
I can add something to that. We, we do a lot of, actually around Michigan, uh, bus, facilities for municipal buses and county bus systems. And one of the things that we're missing in this community, if nobody asked me, but if they did, I would say, there's facilities in, in some communities that take much better care of their bus drivers. And, and that is an avenue that could be explored, given all the funding that washes through our school system. But, that is a, when it comes to like attracting bus drivers and keeping them, the facilities have something to do with that. And, and that might be an avenue somebody outside of this room considers one day.
I just hate for us to try to plan a road.
Well, we.
We need is.
That's. Coordination with schools is always a difficult.
Yeah.
This is always a challenge in many ways, but no, it's a valid point.
Okay, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, additional thoughts, questions, comments? Yes, Michelle?
Just to clarify, the last statement I made regarding Karen's question about service. Does the planning commission, do you feel that a map is needed to identify the, the properties that you want to potentially? You're more comfortable with the general?
I'm comfortable general, is that?
I think that's just opening up a can of worms that we would have to manage for that moment forever.
Especially if it's the landowner initiative.
I agree.
Sounds good to me. No, I just wanted to. Other thing I will ask you, is this council was informed at their last meeting of the letters. And there was some general consensus that, um, language could be tweaked, that, that made it clear that, um, um, just because to Sonam's point earlier, just because the conversation is between the city and the property owner, doesn't mean that there wouldn't be communication with the townships. Are you okay if staff works up language? For council.
Clarify that, I think. So yeah, I think that goes without saying.
Yeah, I think it's an obvious point, but whatever.
But if it's a concern, yes, clarify it. Thank you. It's not a substantive. Um.
Doesn't necessarily require a change to the motion you've made.
Right, right. I.
Can take it up.
But thank you. No, we appreciate you bringing it up. Okay, I think with that, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Aldag?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Eetly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, thank you, staff consultants. That was a lot of work. I mean, it was an update, but there was a lot of work in some of those sections. So.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's a lot of background work. Okay, so moving right along. Uh, pre-rans participation, we have none tonight. So we, uh, on to reports of officers. Uh, I will, unfortunately, will be absent the next for the August meeting. So um, Mr. Phillips, do you know your schedule yet or not? But um, I will be in Iceland, so.
Ooh, wow.
Yeah, it's part of the retirement thing, so.
Retirement.
Yeah, um, so that's just, yeah. So that's just my chairman report for that. Um, anything from commissioners? At this time that you want to share or any extra committees that we've met over the last month, CBA, anything? No?
No, ZBA meeting again.
Anything? Okay, well, that's good, I guess. Um, yes.
So you used to have a representative on the DDA that was a, or sorry, on the PC that was a liaison to parks.
Yeah.
Do you want, following up on Ms. Roberts' um, comment regarding First Street Park, do you want to, you're going to have a um, your uh, officers? Oh, I thought we had, I thought I put that.
Elections? Oh, yeah, I think it's.
I guess I put the wrong agenda. We can add that to your agenda, the election of officers, you can identify that person at that time if you wanted.
For the, for the parks? Yeah, I mean, if. With, so for next month then?
Go for this month.
Oh, for this month? Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I picked the wrong agenda for myself.
Okay, so um, all right, so I guess we'll, we'll save that for a little bit later then. So with the, with that, then do we have a community development report? Oh, no, I'm sorry, skip council. Anything with council? Great, okay, thank you. Um.
Uh, it, you've got my report, you're gonna notice that it's a lot shorter now. Um, we're no longer continuing the list of things that have previously been reported if there isn't any updates. So um, it, it'll keep us focused and.
We also.
I have a question. Do you know what's happening over there?
Oh, right, where this, on the corner of, um, you can see it off the window.
Third and, third and Brian.
Yeah.
We have an application for a land division and there's a, a developer that wants to build three homes.
Three?
Okay, just single family homes?
Just single family homes. I mean, house.
Okay.
So. But that ends up being sixty-five feet each, probably. Yeah, it's the two hundred, I think, or.
Well, because you're on the curb.
Yeah, that's.
That first one is a little bit different than the rest of them are. But yeah, they're, they're larger than the forty-nine and a half that you could go down to. So we, we tried to encourage uh, more, but they.
That's gonna be a lot, no.
Somehow.
Yeah, interesting. Um. Okay, anything else or no? You're good? All right, uh, citizens wishing to address the commission? We only one online or in house, I'd like to address the commission. Seeing no one. Old business, we have none tonight. New business, uh, preliminary site plan review for the Superior Innovation Center. So we will go to, so, sorry. Okay. Wait, I'm sorry, what?
No, as you're saying, we'll start with the applicant.
That's what I thought.
If you want to introduce the.
Okay, yep, well, I, I think with that, right, exactly, this is a preliminary site plan review. So I think if we wanna have the applicant do his, the presentation brief first, you know, go through your project, and then we'll have uh, the consultant follow up as well and staff.
Good evening, uh, you break it short, sweet and bright. Um, yeah, here tonight to uh, present for preliminary plan approval, our Superior Innovation Center. Uh, two ten thousand square foot buildings, also straightforward.
Yeah, no, that's good for now. I mean, if we have questions, we'll, we'll call you back up. So that's fine. Okay, so with that, um, do we want to have a consultant, Megan, or planning? Yeah, staff and then.
Hey, the applicant's proposing to build two city-sized multi-story unit that they can do five units each to a ton of wood. Unit for about two thousand square feet. Um, and is proposed to be used for light industrial, being back to research and nothing, abilities testing labs. Who are contacted, maybe back in the chair of the office and the administrative support, supposedly is a thought listed. Those are all allowed, he says, we didn't move research development districts. What's unique about this development is it's offered in homes at smaller scales than we've seen. The most most industrial developments usually they're, they're much, much larger, larger and people would use them. The site's zone research development, as is everything surrounding it, and it's also big research development, as is everything around it. Um, in terms of area with setbacks in the height, um, everything, the building needs the dimensional dangers of the zone events. Um, in terms of building design, um, it complies with the requirements of the garden district, given one recommendation um, that the applicant considered using alternate brick color um, between the unit to show some variations on the side. Um, you can also see that they propose signage above each door, that could also help with wayfinding. And this is just a recommendation. In terms of natural resources, um, there's a lookings at the back of the site, um, that's something that's proposed to be preserved. No constructions going near that. Um, as you've been through our review and staff review, you would have seen also there's some back and forth about the street trees that are proposed. There's some street trees that propose to be preserved at the front. Those are so young and some are not in good health. Um, that it would likely probably be better in consulting with our landscape architect that those just be removed and new trees put in. Uh, we also had some, he also had some recommendations um, about foundings and other technical details. Um, in terms of traffic impact, um, this center, a research development center of the same gross floor area would be predicted to generate, produce less traffic, and that's likely because you have less components. Um, but the, where this is in the research in, in in the industrial park is adequately served and also they meet all of the provisions in terms of driveway spacing, so we don't anticipate circulation or are one of you being uh, the issue will prefer or so be in junior. In terms of landscaping, touched on the street trees, um, but also you have a decision tonight. Um, they have more of the ten to twenty-five percent in terms of the genus and species first proposed for their perennials specifically. This comes up almost every site plan in terms of triangles, and we asked you to make a waiver. Staff pointed out also that you could make a finding that landscaping only applies to trees and trunks and not to these perennials in general, and therefore can what can that rather than have to give this waiver every time that somebody proposed more perennials um, that in a certain species over the ten percent to twenty-five percent. And then also in terms of landscaping, there is a electric transformer on the northwest side, northwest corner of the site that's proposed to be treated by how many birds, summer sweet potions, shrubs, it's a short deciduous fruit, which should be recommended to taller and her green bush be substituted. And there's also the other issue that comes up in site access and circulation, but also later on, um, we were talking about the dumpsters and waste receptibles, location of those dumpsters and waste, waste receptibles. You can see that they're in the eastern and the western um, property line, that you're located inside your setup. Also, when we were reviewing for circulation, we noticed that the fire trucks, there's, if you look at where the, the truck circulation, there's no way your fire truck's not gonna go in there and not go over the pad. Um, so, and then I think the engineer's pointing out there's some infrastructure there as well. Um, so input um, or some conclusion about where those um, where those waste receptibles should, can be or should be, would be uh, a good thing to provide to the applicant tonight, because you can read that location, you feel like where those is the best place for them. In terms of marketing and loading, the vehicular perfectly comply, but they need to provide the two by the whole. Also, um, in terms of loading, the ordinance requires a five hundred square foot space. Um, what they're proposing is a full of eighteen feet for two hundred and sixteen square feet. This makes a lot of sense for the smaller units, which will probably have a lax structure, not semi or a van. Um, but again, that would be bigger than we have the power. And then finally, um, as we've noted before, there's ten wall sites proposed for the door of each unit. Um, also uh, there's, they're proposing a monument sign. Again, all of those would come through final site plan and then be committed under their own by staff or later date. Um, so those were for informational. Um, in terms of industrial cycling requirements, um, we ask that you consider um, giving a decision on whether an industrial activity statement should be required for efficiently units that's required in cycling review for a single tenant building. Um, and that's important to comply that it meets with the performance standards of the research development district. That would be beneficial without for staff to have as each of these units turns over and happens. Um, and so we would ask that if you have moved it forward, that that would be a mission of people. The remaining decisions again are the waiver, the loading spaces, the dumpster locations, and also um, a decision on the percentage units of perennials that are purple. We happy to answer any question.
Great, thank you. Well, move on for now. We may have additional questions.
For request for claims, Stacy Monty of Colson. We offered a number of comments in our letter, both preliminary and final site plan comments, but focusing on the preliminary comments, we had a few that were more major than the others, those were moving a water main through the site. That's following the engineering standard as well as discussions that we have at city staff and the C W. Keeping the utility easements clear of permanent structures, which backing in, I can support with dumpster enclosures, those are currently in the water main easement, um, so we can just request that those be relocated. And then the other more major comment is considering reducing the drive aisle width between the middle lanes, or at least clarifying the purpose of it being so large. Um, that will help in terms of the imperious and imperious surface, but they are needing the earmarked amount of runoff for this property. The rest of our preliminary comments are relatively minor and are pretty typical to see at this uh, review level. They're pretty straightforward. And then like I mentioned to me providing comments to address during the final site and submit all um, those don't typically have. All right, well. If you have any engineering questions?
Great, thank you. We might, but we'll, we'll call you back up. Um. Okay, so we'll have our staff wrap it up.
Okay, so Mr. Ed Root uh, with D AFD is online, however, he's not really able, I believe, to uh, present at this time. So we can just provide a, a the, his uh, report to you, if that's all right. Um, yeah, I've already said that. Um, so the items of, of their concern um, are just, are really items that would be addressed on the final site plan. Um, which is the fire detection monitoring system, panic hardware for the exterior doors, knock box for each location, fire lane signs as needed, and then address suite numbers and signage, and that will all be um, taking that, that specific last one would be taken care of um, through finals zoning compliance.
All right, that's good.
I'm not really certain what else to add. I, I think that the consultants did a great job uh, going through the, the main points. Is there anything, Michelle, that you specifically would like to add?
So you have the staff letter in the packet. Um, excuse me, I think in general, one of the things that needs to be pointed out is this proposed multi-family industrial spec building is compatible with the master plan. And that's important to point out, especially the goals and objectives, because from the previous proposal that um, Mr. Josh had, um, those were two of the reasons uh, specifically that it didn't get approved. So it's important to note that and to acknowledge that for the applicant as well as the community. Um, the um, the other general condition about impeding um, the normal development of other properties within, um, it, it is located within the business park and it does have sewer water and storm water. Um, as it pertains to um, businesses or um, future tenants that are gonna occupy those units, all future tenants are gonna have to go through the site plan approval process, a special land use process, if that's applicable. Uh, zoning compliance permit, and each of those tenants will have to do the industrial activity statement. So um, that is a condition of approval that we've putting into your packet. Both Megan and um, Stacy went over the water main issue and the dumpster enclosure issue. Um, your, you will need to make a decision as far as um, uh, Carlisle Wortman's recommendation on building design. Uh, for landscaping, there are um, um, recommendations regarding um, existing trees that are in poor condition. And you'll have to decide whether the um, the genus and species percentage is required on perennials. We don't regulate perennials, but as to Megan's point, it's coming up every single time. So either a waiver or a determination that that falls outside that scope of regulation. Oh, um, for the mechanical equipment, um, these, the, what cited as a um, a mechanical or a transformer in the southwest corner, um, that was on the stake, it's actually identified as a sign. So you can, you can just disregard that. Any mechanical equipment, um, they may not even know where it's gonna be located at final. It would just be a condition of approval at that time that it's gonna require screening. Um, I think I've gone over the major things for you, um, but if you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, we look to plan and commission. Um, and then of course, we can call the applicant as well as the consultant or staff for additional questions. Um, on page, what, two, beginning on two forty-six, there's a motion. Again, this is preliminary. Uh, there are conditions that need to be addressed for preliminary as well as for final. Um, so with that, I guess I'll leave the floor open, or if somebody would like to make a motion. Uh, again, some sample motions on page two forty-six, two forty-seven of the packet. If you have discussion and all consultants if needed. All consultants if needed. Any anxious to make a motion?
I can do that again.
Going for it, Mr. Hell?
Guess so.
Alright, you're brave. Thank you.
I'm going to, in my motion, state some things which others may not agree with, but that's part of the whole.
Yep, we'll put it out there.
Based on the information provided by the applicant staff, C W A O H M and D A F D, the planning commission finds the preliminary site plan. P S P P two five zero 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 one. For Superior Innovation Center located at twenty-five fifty-eight Bishop Circle West, Dexter, Michigan, four eight one three oh. Zero eight zero eight oh seven one twenty-five oh four seven. Meets the requirements of section twenty-one point oh eight and twenty-one point oh nine of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval to the city council. Subject to the following determination waivers and conditions. Determination and waivers, number one, the. Applicant. I've got questions on this, but nevertheless, applicants should consider alternating brick color to delineate each unit. Number two, non-required landscape material shall not be subject to the percentage of the genus. And species regulation and in section six oh four. Um, if the A here, if the planning commission determines non-required landscape materials subject to the percentage of. Genus and species regulation is in section six point oh four. A waiver from the percentage of the.
Don't have to do that.
We don't have to do that, then.
As you already made it.
Still not, so I don't even follow that. Okay. Number three, a waiver from the minimum size requirements for loading and unloading in section. Five point oh nine shall not be granted. The conditions be the conditions. All of them listed here, and I won't read them all. Are fine. And that's about the size of it.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a support?
Could I ask for clarification? What is not waiver from five point oh nine referred to?
That's the loading and unloading, so each of Hill was saying they would not be waived from it, they'd have to provide it.
Okay.
So.
Yes.
So they could provide it maybe in a preferred situation in the island next to the building?
Why don't we get a second and discuss?
Yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, exactly. Let's get, okay, so second Rob, so move till second Roberts. Okay, now we are in discussion. Yes.
I'll start. I I think the the um. The aesthetic of the project is is horrible. Um, this is a kind of a front door to the park. And I don't know how the. These choices were made. First of all, there's no rendering showing us what this thing is really going to look like. It's a bunch of black and white uh. Uh, three dimensional, some things that aren't really clear, but um. It it, you know, the massing isn't hideous, but it 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 it's really terrible, uniquely terrible, and I think. I think it's it will serve the applicant poorly. In my opinion, and the community poorly to build something like this um right as you enter the park. It's it's a. It's not going to be an asset to that park or to your project to build something that looks this terrible. And I don't know what to tell you about, maybe, you know. That's your business, how to solve that, but uh. It's just uniquely awful. I mean, I I I get it, we, you know. Um, we've all seen uh mobile homes and some of us like them more than others, but. This is just uh. Pretty terrible. I I like to see in final something better, and I'd also like to see samples, the materials, so that is a final thing. And also would like to see renderings of what it's going to look like uh. Clear, and I hope that you're able to uh do something better. Us apart from these comments, uh, I I gotta say, in terms of the project itself. There are a number of projects like this in in Ann Arbor that are very successful, and I would anticipate that. That once you do get this cleaned up and uh and actually constructed, that it's going to be a very successful project for you.
Thank you. Um, additional um questions, Mr. Cardy?
I I'm with Tom. It's a terrible looking good project.
Well said.
Completely behind the projects, completely behind what you're trying to do and the niche you're trying to serve. It looks bad.
It's important.
So, okay, that's all. No, okay, additional, uh, yes, Mr. Covert.
Uh, if if I can ask the applicant a question, there's there's about an acre of land south of the south of the parking area, and I think I asked this when you came before us with the concept. What are your plans for that? I'm I'm also, one of the other things that I'd like to see added when you come back for final site plan is a sidewalk. That connects. Either on the east side or the west side from the sidewalk in Bishop Circle. All the way down the side, all the way to the fronts of the southern building in the island, and I think. Um, you can also resolve the loading space by just showing a loading space dashed in there, deferred. One of the islands, right? But I think a walk would be important to get from the right away to both building frontages. I don't think there's a grave complication or anything with that. I think that would be beneficial to the project. And and I think the dumpster should be moved, but I think you have to do that anyways for the water main, not for it, so. Again, I I think it's going to be a successful project.
So, uh, oh, yeah.
Last comment.
No, no.
This may not be um germane, but. In the traffic analysis, it depended on employees. But this is a warehouse. You know, employees aren't irrelevant.
They're not warehouses.
No.
The principal use cannot be a warehouse.
It's not.
No, ma'am. The warehouse comment that's on the plans, that's one of the comments in either. Uh, in Carlisle Wortman's or the um. Uh, O H M that that had to be removed.
So it's going to be many manufacturing?
That could be manufacturing, it could be assembly, it could be. It's it's R and B, any, that doesn't mean that they can't use portion of their unit. For storing and warehousing products that are made on site, but the use of the unit cannot be warehousing by itself.
Okay.
Good. Hey, thank you. Yes, that's correct.
Sorry, one last thing that um should have stuck to my notes. You own the property to the west, correct? Is there the possibility that you could show as a feature connection? A stub um dashed in that would connect over to that property? I I I don't think you can give an easement to yourself. Will this be a different LLC that owns this than what owns the property to the west?
Not sure about her.
I think I think it would be beneficial to have the opportunity to connect this from an access perspective with the neighboring property since it's owned. Or could be owned separately.
For cross-access. Be pretty good.
I I'd like to see it to the east, but I think there's less opportunity. With east than there is to the west with property that they already control.
Correct. So, well, wait.
None of them are developed in this manner necessarily either.
I I think they all respect.
Well, if you want to talk, we got to, you got to come up to the mic, but I think, I don't think we need a full discussion on that necessarily, but um. But I, did you have any other additional questions? But I agree, the access. So I did have a question that, if if you want to step forward, it's regarding the water main. So it's regarding that water main and looping the water main, so that's a pretty significant. Cost, and it's a pretty significant implication, and it seems like your project is riding on that, so. Have you had, and in addition, it also seems like the dumpsters are in the easements, so it seems like those. Are going to have to be moved, and that's not necessarily a super, well, maybe it is on the site, I don't know, but. Those could be design implications, so I'm curious to know what your feedback is about the looping water main.
Well, we're going to be compliant, so we will.
So that's a yes, that you, yeah, I mean, you have to, obviously. Okay.
Mick, you have um. Never mind.
Nope.
He already, he already identified himself the first time.
Yeah, okay, so I guess that wasn't, so again, my concern was because that's a pretty significant. Undertaking that that wasn't something that was a shocking to you that you're.
Oh, no shock.
Yeah, well, we'll come up with something, but, okay, so you you feel fairly confident you're going to be able to address that as well as relocating the dumpsters. Um, on the site. Okay, um. Okay, well, that was, yeah, kind of more my my major concern, because that is, in some cases, it could be a deal, deal killer. Um, okay, and then again, just one other final comment, I know that we. I mean, you've heard it here um about the design, and I know we do not have design standards, but I do think. I echo the comments of others regarding design, but also I think that you do have a potential successful project here, and I wouldn't necessarily. Uh, and I know design costs money to a certain degree, but I wouldn't undersell your product. It is an entryway, and I think you do get enough people in there, and. It it does look pretty blind. I it is spicing it up a little bit, I think. Is benefit to you as well, and I think that even, as we've mentioned before, I think the sidewalk is a good addition because. You will have businesses are adapting, as we know, you may know this better than me, faster than. A lot of, or those type of businesses are adapting really quickly, so I wouldn't sell yourself just to look at like the basic, basic there, because you may have more of a wider market that could. You know, really utilize those facilities if it looks like it's kind of necessarily a step above. Just the base, but I get it, I'm not the one paying for it, so. But, okay, do you do you have any other uh thoughts, any other feedback from what you heard here tonight? I mean, and you're.
Heard everything yet.
Yeah, oh, that's true. Okay, so we have, we'll have another comment. Yes, well. What specific, I guess, Chuck, did you have a comment directly for the applicant or?
I was gonna, um. Well, not, it's not a question. It is a comment relative to your site plan and what you're doing there.
Yeah, now it's good as time is any.
The uh somewhere in your report, Megan, you mentioned um. Alternating color brick. Between each unit to show variations in the facade, in the facade. From what I can tell, there is no variation in the facade, it's just a flat wall, right? But, am I right?
Yeah, yeah.
That would help a lot if there was a little bit of variation, say at each entry, the door to each unit. Um, projected out a foot or something. And that was a different brick and everything else is the same, ju- doing it that way rather than. Each unit having a different brick color, whatever you might have been thinking, Megan. Um. Uh, in other words, that can be done probably and make your building look a whole lot better uh than what it looks right now. Um, so that was one of my comments. The other one is. Two bicycle ramp um hoops. You're required, there's no question. But my question would be, where in the heck are they going to go and who's going to use them? And that's your question too, I'm sure. Um, we've got ten units here. The guy in unit ten is not going to park his bike. In one of the bike racks out front. You might consider, it's not a requirement, but you might consider putting a bike rack at each unit so that in front. Of it, so that someone bikes to work, they can but park their bike there outside. Um, ten to me is a ridiculous number. I know it's code and I and I understand where it comes from. One of the things I mentioned in the um um. In the motion was the. Um, not requiring you to. Uh, whatever it is with the planting um.
Yeah, the perennials.
I'm a. I'm totally opposed. Have always been. I know it's ordinance. Um, and I understand where it's coming from, but from a landscape plan, regardless of whether it's the perennials or whatever. Not being able to emphasize by way of planting. Things like entrances, which you can't do if you're mixing everything up, you know, if you had a Basca, whatever, or you had, you know, whatever you're doing. Um, you you don't, it's hard to conform to ordinance. So I'm totally in favor of any variation that strengthens the landscape plan because it has so much to do with. With your building and the site.
And I think that's a relatively. Cost-efficient.
Yeah.
Method.
Yeah.
Last, in the big scheme of things.
So you have your landscape architect. You know, spend some time, in my opinion. On um. A striking landscape plan rather than just throwing a whole bunch of plant material out there. That's all I had.
Well, thank you. Uh, yes.
So, okay, um, you know, when when we talk about aesthetics, I I I kind of always get concerned when there's specific advice, design advice given to an applicant. I don't think that's appropriate either from the consultant or for us, so that's why I try to keep my comments general and not do that. Um, putting different color brick on each unit. Might sound good in a letter, but that could also be ridiculous, because it's not unlikely that you're going to get tenants that are going to take three of these. So now they're, what what is each, it it's going to look like they're all separate and then they're going to have the same sign or whatever. I think that is not necessary at all to make this project better. Any more than telling you, uh, you know, make it a red roof or something like that. I think um. You can make this, you know, your architect can make this a lot better looking project without using. Different color brick or whatever, that's, to me, that's. That that's not our job to tell you how to do it, just, you know. Anyway, that's my two cents on it.
Got a variety of comments. Feedback there, yeah. Oh, yes, you did have a question, thank you.
Not necessarily in front of planning, it's a, it, they have to provide a site plan. And a um, when we say site plan, that could be the um interior build out, et cetera.
But not coming to outside that the estate.
They're based.
Unless there was, yeah, you don't know.
It it, it's zoning compliance, I just want to make sure that your tenant's complying with the zoning, so that's just a check through the city.
Or there could be a chance something could be a special exception, or not exception, what do we call it?
The uses of, yeah.
Yeah, if the uses. But the individual build out, no. Okay, so, yes.
I have a question.
Question, please.
There's a lot of comments.
Yes.
And comments that are going to affect the layout of the plan, which makes me a little nervous. Saying, yeah, go for our. I know this is preliminary, so would we not see this again until final?
Would not see it again until final.
So we wouldn't know what the changes were to the plan until after all the changes were made and. Presumably, they think they're on the right path, and then they come back here and we say, oh, wait, no, 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 there's there's a lot of changes that are required here.
Right, that, well, that that's correct, and that's why I asked the question regarding the main, the looping and.
Right.
The the design. So other additional feedback on that from. Planning commissioners, again, some concern about the amount of changes that are on there. Yes. Anybody else have additional comment?
Yeah, I mean, just uh, we're all. Since we're all talking about the design. Uh, one thing that jumps out at me is it's got a really long ridge, like the roof line is just this one long roof line. It looks to me like you might be doing trusses now, which I like. Yeah, it was, look, you know, I'm. Not a big single pitch roof person now, like if there's a real. But maybe it might be a cheap way to jazz that up by having the trust guys do something, throw some gables on there, you know what I mean? Might be an easy way to do something.
Oh, so just. There's no concern in. Uh, water main. As far as design. Uh, so they got.
Okay.
And as far as the dumpster enclosures go. Uh, one of the comments said, put them at the back and probably similarly. About, you know, like, which are. Being kind of arbitrary requirements, uh, because someone bad building needs to be go, hook up to the front building. I'm going to say it's true. No, it's to go to the back of the parking lot, go throw away one box.
Well, they will, if that's where it is.
If they have to. If that's the only location, but I think, but that's a code issue.
Right, the further away you pick a track themselves, plus like.
What do you got them at both ends of that parking, or both ends of that aisle right now?
I think it makes most sense.
I think the problem is that there's utility easements proposed and you can't have them go in there, so.
I'm just uh, we can move those until it's.
But is that a more?
It's just the easement though.
It's just the easement though, too, isn't it?
Well, but if utilities are going there, I mean, I don't want to get into the weeds too much.
That he's gotta move.
Right.
Easement and the utility, and if he can do it. And and maintain the dumpsters in those locations, he's preferring to do that.
Right, that's the biggest concern.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If we change our current site layout more than ten percent, what the third would be proposed, if it gets. We would have to go back and say.
So. I know where you're coming from, because this is a a site in a built out part. Having the option of combining preliminary and final is an option, so. If from staff's perspective, if. The plan was changed more than ten percent. And when it came back to final, it would not. Other me, I don't think we'd have a problem being able to provide planning commission with. Direction and. In a, in a, in a proper review, so, but if planning commission isn't comfortable with that. And we need to address that with the applicant.
But you're also looking for approval for the dumpsters to be located in the setback. Which? Is that correct?
Planning Commission.
They're required setback.
But planning commission can. Uh, provide a waiver.
We could. And there's so much room on this site that to provide a waiver, like, there's really, to me, there's not a lot of compelling reason. To provide a waiver. Would, I also think serviceability here is a problem, but.
Would you prefer that the applicants, would you prefer to. Postpone. The approvals, give the applicant the time to. Address the comments, concerns, et cetera, and come back. With a cleaner site plan then, especially since the dumpsters, he's already said he'll take care of the water and move on.
Well, that's gonna, so the, so the. Right, you mentioned the waiver, but but by preliminary. Approval tonight, we're not necessarily granting that waiver, though, are we, by preliminary, it's not.
So you could still, if if. If the applicant were to come back and the dumpsters are still in the setback. But he demonstrates to your satisfaction that that's the best place for them, and usually. Opportunity, even at final, to waive the requirement, if you so choose. If you don't feel that he's demonstrated that that's the best place for it, then he wouldn't grant the waiver, and. You'd be telling him at final to. Fix the plan and come back. In order to get approval.
Okay, um. Additionals. Uh, oh, Kyle, you have your hand up, or you think?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, there's a rendering on two six five. Three D rendering. You know, it shows some windows up above. It shows these trans and windows up. Oh, they get, you can't. Is it close, is it gonna be closer to that one, or the elevation? This is more. Think it's an idea.
Okay, so, oh, yes, Mr. Pope.
Just for clarity, the motion we have on the table. Item E. So. Three E, the dumpster enclosure shall be relocated towards the back of the site and screened in accordance with section three point O eight D five. For the zoning ordinance. I'm presuming that that means.
But.
That's the motion, right, we didn't say we're gonna give a variance or anything like that.
Right, and that's the submittal, the final site plan has to address that.
Right.
So, right, that means that we're not granting it. Right.
Is it appropriate to tell the applicant exactly where something needs to be, or just say that it needs to be. Somewhere else, I mean, it'd be up to them where to put it.
Exactly, I'm not.
Locating in fourth.
To me, in accordance with section three point O eight D five is the most important part of that.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, yeah. I I don't think we should be telling the applicant where to put his dumpster.
And the utility easement is part of that, though.
But that's the first one, permanent structure.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Permitted, we deliberately separated that.
Yes, okay, so that's a larger concern.
So if you wanted to modify the motion, the motion makers to take out, the dumpster enclosure shall be relocated to the back of the site and. Just leave it that the dumpster enclosure shall be screened in accordance. Just take out relocated toward the back of the site. How about just relocated, though, isn't that? They have, they have to be moved, yes? Right, but that's already said indeed. Okay.
Yeah, but run that by me again, and where did you? What's being changed here?
So permanent structures shall not be permitted within a water main easement.
Right.
Or placed over any water sanitary mains or. The the system is going to be looped, we don't know where that looping is going to be, but wherever it is, there's going to be an easement. And there's going to be those utilities, the permanent structures, which. Are described in the letters as the dumpsters, can't go there, neither can buildings, et cetera.
Right.
So D covers everything. If he ends, if the easements, let's say for kicks and giggles, the easement's in the same place, but. Goes around the whole system or the whole property, then he's gonna have to move those dumpsters, they cannot be in the easement. Okay? Does that make sense to you all?
I think.
Yes.
Do the easements.
I think.
Meet setback, like, the requirements of setbacks and everything where they're located.
The easement location.
Sorry, dumpsters.
I'm sorry.
The dumpsters, where they're located, do they, are they the proper distance from the property lines?
No, that's where we can.
Okay. Okay, so motion maker, are you, are you, we've had some discussion here, and there's some questions, are you? So there is a motion to. Approve the preliminary site plan?
Yes.
Based on the conditions. Um, quite a few conditions listed in the packet. Was there any other changes to your motion?
I didn't hear any other than.
Right.
Well. To just clarify. Do you, must the dumpsters be relocated to the back of the site? Or. Or could the dumpsters potentially still remain where they are? If he's able to not have them within the the utility easement, and I ask that because then potentially, conditions. Condition um E should be striked. From the the motion.
That's right, that's correct, if that's the case. Stricken from the motion.
If that's.
Screened.
But that's your motion, so. Right now, it's not.
Wouldn't we have to say the dumpster enclosure shall be relocated to meet setbacks and screened in accordance with?
You could say that.
Well, yeah, is it? Yeah, isn't it up to say it has to be code, I mean. Like. It has to be code, so. I don't know that we. Right, need necessarily move it all. Or include all the. Specifics.
So relocated to meet coded. Is that what you just?
Well, in accordance with.
Yeah, okay.
To meet the setbacks, because that's the issue that's.
All right.
Tripping people up right now. And it has to be screened, so.
So, yeah, towards the back of the site completely gone, the. And replaced with to meet setback requirements and screen.
The dumpster enclosure shall meet setback. Requirements. And screening in accordance with, right, selection three point O eight D five of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah. Are you comfortable with that in general?
I'm perfectly comfortable with it.
Robert? Okay, you're comfortable in your support.
I I do have a question, though, did we? All right. I do have a tendency to sometimes zone out. Did we address the minimum? Requirement, not, the waiver from the minimum loading requirement is shall not be granted?
Yes.
Okay.
That was, yeah, not.
Okay, so he's got to somehow accommodate for that. Right. He's gotta demonstrate it. Okay.
Additional questions, um.
Dumpster is a lot of. Dumpster is.
The song. Yeah, definitely, it's just. There are a lot of regard anywhere. And the side guards. Yeah, it's a big house, it requires stuff out, so you'll.
I think it's talking about in between the buildings.
You've got some circulation problem, follow with that, but. That is, there's something you can figure out.
Okay, so I think. Okay, so it looks like substantially. You you can address. Or you feel confident that you can address some of the major issues regarding the water main and more or less preliminary. Okay, um. Okay, other, any in there, no, closing thoughts, then I think we are ready for a, so the motion is, and we will. If passed, then we will see it back for final. Okay, and and sorry, one last thing, Michelle, you mentioned that if it. Ah, forget it, okay, all right, we're ready for it, no, what?
So this is a recommendation to City Council. So the um. There are. A number of things before we take it to council, we'll ask the applicant to provide that revised plan. So that it can then go there, if that makes you more com- feel more comfortable.
Yes.
Or you can just come, if goes like it is to council, council has the same comments, questions, then it comes back to you for final.
Yeah, well, you, Ms. Ford, are you, are we gonna add something?
I like the motion as it's written, that says that um, we're moving the plan as submitted with these conditions for council to react to. And then they would adjust the. They would make these revisions when they submit their final site plan.
Yeah, and and council always has the authority to to postpone it at that point if they want the additional, I guess, if the issues aren't solved to. Satisfaction, that's council's prerogative, okay. Okay, so I'm sorry, can we have a roll call, both of you?
Phillips.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Aldad.
Yes.
Eatley.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Alrighty.
Thank you all.
Thank you, all right. Moving along then to the second new business item, which is a discussion, mobile food vending. Food trucks. You should have one out here for demonstration purposes. All right, who, is that Jenna, Michelle? All right, Jenna. What's our intro?
Okay, so as we had mentioned at the last meeting, um, City Council. I had a discussion about food trucks, um, and then. And then at their June ninth meeting, they discussed it a bit further, um, and they basically. There, there was a lot of interest on council um, to allow the food trucks. Um, beyond special events, I should say, you should clarify that right now, we do allow food trucks for special events, we issue. A permit um, for private, private property, uh, and then also the city. Uh, another department, uh, hum, will issue food truck. Uh, or special event approval that often just of food trucks as well. Um, so the, the conversation really is, should food trucks be allowed? Um, beyond just these special events, these special instances. Um, so there was quite a bit of support um, from council for that. Um, but as, you know, they started getting into details, it was recommended. Um, by council for to come to planning commission, who's better equipped. Um, to handle those details, and then to make a recommendation back to City Council. Um, her conversation that planning commission had um, about this at their last meeting. Um, it was noted that, you know, this is something that the planning commission would like to work through slowly. Um, and so the, our report kind of. Provides you that ability, we provided some examples or of of zoning ordinances. Um, and in addition to a spreadsheet that and goes through those those common standards. Um, that spreadsheet was also provided to City Council for their information. Um, however, we then, in your packet, also provided you that actual ordinance text language. Um, for for some background, uh, we also provided you with a couple of. Um, reports. In. Addition, so one was with APA zoning practice, um, specific to food trucks. And then one report was National League of Cities, um, also on food trucks, which. You may or may not know has become a very big hot issue, um, really nationwide. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of information about it being a good economic development driver. Uh, there's a lot of information about. It being something that, you know, in general, residents are are interested in. Um, but there's also some information about, well, what the fair, you know, what. May or may not be fair, um, in terms of taxes that established businesses. Um, brick and mortar would, you know, pay taxes, and food trucks. Uh, may not, so, but there's a lot of issues around this, which I think that both of those reports did a good job of of addressing. Um, we propose, or we, you know, put in a couple of considerations. Um, into our report. Um, just to kind of get the conversation started, but ultimately, you know, however you. All want to to pursue this, um, you know, we we give you that latitude, so.
Yes, I think that's an interesting. It's an interesting tough subject, so, um, I like, though, in the. Remember, you guys have recommended a meeting with the DDA, yeah, I think that that's probably a great idea, because that was one of the. As well as other business owner, I mean, I was thinking of really all the business owners in the city, but. So, yeah, look for other commissioner thoughts on the food truck items? Yes, huh?
Um, we've actually designed spaces in Ann Arbor for four, specifically for food trucks. And it's kind of interesting, they have a lot of flexibility, but they like to have. Available utilities to hook up if if they're available, but if they're not, they work around them. So there's, there's a lot of flexibility in here, I, I gotta say, this, this spreadsheet is really great, and, uh. Uh, surprise, actually, Ann Arbor, of all these, uh, has, I think, has a really good. Uh, kind of balanced approach to this, where I see some of the other communities kind of have poison pills here, you can see that they don't like them. So they have things in here to make it much more difficult. For for food trucks to uh, to operate if if they're interested, so. Again, I think Ann Arbor is is pretty nice.
Yes, Michelle.
I have a really quick question for the entire planning commission, is anybody familiar with the food truck park in Plymouth Township?
Was it like Mark's Carts in Ann Arbor? That was that food truck downtown, but downtown Humming Garden.
Right.
It may have been, uh, my husband and I passed it a few weeks ago. And I've been trying to find information, and I've contacted the township, I'm not getting any calls back. But they got a special land use approval for a food truck park. Next to one of their industrial parks on Schoolcraft and. I want to say. It's right at the boundary with La Bona, so. If you get a chance, drive by there, that's a food truck park. I don't know that any of us are.
Right, that's kind of next level, right, right, but.
But. The two, two. Tom's point, um, to what Ann Arbor tried during COVID, I know you don't have the food truck park anymore, but, um. It never hurts to have that one on one visual, and we'll keep trying to find the information, but. It it. We've got some questions here, you would like to discuss them, or if you want to discuss them with a joint meeting like you. It suggested.
Yes, Mr. Cardy.
First of all, I think this is one of the best presentations of information we've had, so thank you.
Thank you.
Really, really well done. What was the genesis of this, what got us talking about this?
Sure, so there was an applicant for the marathon. Sure, so, uh, there was an applicant for the Marathon, um, gas station on Main Street. Um, to bring a food truck pretty much all summer, there, there was like, I think like three days that she wanted it there. Um, and in our ordinance, we just, you know, say that they can be for special events. So we had to really, you know. Tell her, well, it has to be a special event, and three days every week throughout the summer is a really special event. Um, and so she ended up agreeing to do, just do Tuesdays, um, tackle Tuesdays with her food truck. Um, for duration during the summer. Um, so then, however, she then approached city management. Um, and said, you know, why do I, why should I be restricted this way? Um, she did get a petition, um, together and brought that to council, and that's what started the conversation, council.
I've got a, if I could.
Yes, please.
I have a, a general question. What's the definition of a special event? I mean, Friday night? Music?
Good question.
So, the. The backstory is, when council created the mobile vending, uh, ordinance. Twenty seventeen, I think, maybe twenty eighteen. Food trucks were identified as something that could happen, but it had to be part of a special event. Since the ordinance, zoning ordinance doesn't. Address food trucks, technically, they're not allowed, we've continued the. Process that council started with public property, we've extended it to private property as part of a temporary special event. Otherwise, we'd have to tell everyone, no, we can't have one.
But, my basic question is, if I have a large garage sale with the whole neighborhood, is that a special event?
If you have a garage sale with the whole neighborhood, yes, that would be a special event.
Is that right?
With the exception of Dexter Days, but that. Whole neighborhood, I bring it together, you have individual, that's.
I, I, I would guess there wants to be a good, a clear definition of what that is somehow before.
There is a definition in.
Yeah.
Is there?
In the ordinance. And it takes some liberal interpretation, and the point I'm trying to make is. If we didn't make a liberal interpretation in line with the way council. Addressed it on public property, we'd have to tell everybody, no, they're not coming.
Okay, yes, Mr. Phillips.
I'd just like to point out also that, the, that, for these food trucks to, uh, succeed, they need a lot of flexibility. And the more, a- as we've seen in a lot of communities, the more organized it is, or to put them in a spot or a park or whatever. The less likely they're going to succeed, even where we actually designed them, I'm not sure. They're not thriving because they don't have the accessibility and, and the, 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 the people that know best about where they're going to succeed are, are the food truck operators. So we should maybe take, keep that in mind when we talk about, you know, what is appropriate, because. As soon as we tell them, well, you can go here. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna reduce the likelihood they're gonna succeed.
I'm gonna push back on that pretty far, you know, I work in downtown, I tried on campus, Marshes, and they have a special food truck zone. And it is the only place for trucks are, are allowed, and. It's only during certain dates in the summer, and people get fired up for when that date is coming, and they're sad when it ends. The food truck owners love it, and the place is packed and buzzing, so. I think that the concerns you raise in certain situations undoubtedly would be true. Like if we restricted all the food trucks to a place that. Didn't also have some natural organic traffic, I could see all those concerns. But there are places that restrict them. Within places that have national organic, organic traffic, and they're pretty successful. Mark's, Mark's Cards in Ann Arbor was a good example of that, like, there was a lot of summer town, summer Ann Arbor pedestrian traffic. And they naturally benefited from it, so. I agree with what you're saying, I just think you have to take that and be thoughtful about it, you know what I'm saying? Um, the other thing I'll, I'll share with you is, you know, we, so I, I see that, I see that every day at work, I go to those food trucks, I think it's great. Um. The trucks seem to change out over time, they're competitive for spots there, so you get a certain variety. Um, I also own a cottage in Lexington, and they, um. Were sort of very loose in initially allowing food trucks. What they found were places like gas stations were allowing food trucks to come set up for the summer. And not move, and was creating some. I saw issues, it was creating some garbage issues, it was creating some, both pedestrian and parking issues, and so. I don't have strong feelings, I'm just saying these are things to be aware of. I don't think a food truck parked all summer at a gas station is a value add in our community, just gonna say that.
Yes, Jenna, yes.
Yeah, I have a couple comments, uh, in general, I, I. Do feel, I like the idea of being more flexible than we are right now. General towards that, right, um, I, I do have a couple thoughts. I do believe that, uh, con- conversation with DDA is great, because. Um, other than, so there are two, two uses of this that comes to my mind, one is that somebody wants to have a birthday party, or one of our HOA would like to have a. Food truck in the neighborhood for their meeting, um, and the other is around downtown. Basically where DDA is for events and activities, or similarly to the case we, we had. Um, I'm, I'm less, um, interested in a specific zone, because that really limits it to that. Spot and that spot, and, um, I think that, that gives it a level of. Maybe permanency that I'm not. Towards, comfortable with, thank you. The other thing about, um, um, my thought is the, the safety of it. I know the Dexter area fire department has developed a standard for food trucks that. From what I believe is now becoming more of a standard for even county and the state to consider. Um, and I think if we are moving forward, um, towards the more flexible, um. Personally, I would like to see that the standard to becoming part of the application versus they have to. You know, they come and then there are some things that they need to onsite figure out, but. Not before even they arrive, before even the application is approved, that they meet that standard of the, the AFD.
Oh, great, thank you. Yes, Mr. Covert?
Like chat, I was wondering what a special event is. Uh, I couldn't find it real easy in the code, so I think we need to define what a special event is. I recall when my son turned ten, we had the chuck wagon barbecue out to our house. It's the chuck wagon barbecue, food truck, is it a special event?
Did you get a permit?
That was, that would have fallen under catering, because he.
Yeah.
Operate.
Okay, okay.
But we need to define special, what the special event is. In general, like Tom Phillips, like Commissioner Phillips. I was highlighting in that graph, that chart that was put together, thank you for that. And it seemed like a lot of what Ann Arbor had, I kind of leaned towards, um, some flexibility and those kinds of things. Um, is a special event if my business decides to have a food truck in the parking lot?
That's a special event.
For staff for lunch?
Yep, that would be a special event.
That's a bummer.
We're, we're pretty, we're, we try to be flexible again. It's, it's erring on the side of flexibility, but being as consistent as possible. That's the convert, the question has come up to Saddam's point, and if you, if you'll allow me. Um, can a neighborhood do it as part of their HOA meeting? Absolutely, it's a special event, it would need a permit. The difficulty that, um. The Neighborhood Association, especially Westridge, who wanted to do it, is the, there's not enough people. The food truck requires an X number of sales. Items to be sold. And while it sounds great, oh, Westridge, you've got two hundred and some odd units. The association can't. Can't afford to make a guarantee that it will be, that there will be enough business. To support the food truck being there. So in their case, they wanted to put signs out all over, well, that changes the whole dynamic.
Sure.
Um, so while it sounds great to have, you know, a food truck at your local neighborhood, um, block party. That food truck's gonna want it, a commitment that we don't sell it, you're gonna make up the difference. It, to, to think of as Tom's point, their businesses, they. They, they need certain, they need certain things.
Yes.
I guess, I, I, the, uh, Friday night, uh, music at the park, I think a couple of food trucks showed up at that. That could add a lot to it, and, uh, you know, could really improve that, that whole, uh, kind of vibe out there.
The chamber could do that, and that would be part of a special event permit through the, uh, mobile vending. There's nothing stopping them from doing that.
The chamber, I mean, they do, there's always food trucks at the Friday night.
Okay, I missed, okay.
But I cut.
I missed the follow-up.
You made up a heavy one, I'm sorry.
Yes, Tom did.
I, I think. I think it seems to me like your next step sort of take some of this input and kind of develop a plan for the next steps to this, and. I, I, I'm good with, we need to define what a special event is, and. See how you work in the input that you received tonight.
Okay.
Does he maybe to continue with the use of that for the, as the mechanism to allow food trucks, are you saying? Or just?
I, I think we should be allowing them.
But as special events, were you saying, or just?
I, I don't. I don't know that it would be specifically a special event or an application, or, or an area. I haven't considered all the things and ever read all the, the information, but in my mind, I think we should be more flexible than regimental.
Did you have a point, oh, sorry, chat did you?
Okay, the only thing is, I, I think it would be good if we met with DDA, but I think there could be other parts of the city, like this might be, you know, something for. R and D, they don't have anywhere to go in lunch, you know. And maybe as a way of expanding, I don't want to undo or undercut Roderman's, Raderman's, however you say it, but. Pushing just a little beyond the downtown. This, we're sort of trying to get an notion of sort of expanding that kind of activity. Um, I would love to see it on Second Street, but I don't think there's the. The people, it would have to be on a fall day, and people buying donuts anyway, and, you know.
And to clarify the, the rationale for the, the DDA meeting, would be really to get a sense of like what's. Um, other established business owners feel towards this issue. Um, not necessarily that it would just be within the DVA district.
Well, they're gonna oppose it clearly, right, so, we already know that.
But then, like, somebody brought up a point, maybe, in the industrial park, there's a lot of spots to park around there, and.
Well, I, I think, yeah.
Not enough people.
Yeah, that's the problem, I, I think, one, one of my biggest concerns is just, yeah, that, the time element of it. Somebody, I forgot who had mentioned it, but, because, you know, that getting set up and then staying set up for the entire summer. And then it becoming more of an issue, because one of the issues we had in Ann Arbor was location of issue. Of where, again, without getting too prescriptive of where, but just like in parking spaces or something, because I'm thinking of the gas station, I mean. But it was in the business owner's best interest, obviously, to locate it outside. But if it becomes popular, and again, I think like if they're there six months or three months to a year, then. I do think we start to look at some equity issues with the existing businesses that.
So will you do staff a favor? There are a number of questions.
Yes.
Um, there's just a number of them, um. Send us your thoughts, you don't have to do all of them if you don't want, you may not have comments for us, for them. But, but at least take a stab and send us whichever ones you want to address, that will help us continue this moving forward.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah, please.
Do you get many applications?
That's a good question.
I mean, the vendors themselves are not. Inclined to go somewhere where they're not going to get a lot of business, you mentioned that, I know at Gordon Hall days, you know, when they have those. It's hard finding anybody that really wants to get up there, for whatever reason, I would think that would be the perfect place, but it's not like. Um, everybody goes there looking for something to eat, they're doing other stuff. So it, it may, but, it may not be an issue at all relative to what a special event is, because it's gotta be pretty damn. Special before they even want to go there, is what it must.
Yeah.
When the gas station, um. Owner came in and presented. Um. She didn't have special events in Manhattan, so it was, it was difficult for her. Her purpose for wanting the food truck was to see how a Mexican business. Um, fair, because if it worked, then the, the food truck owner would open his establishment in the gas station. Um, it's a kind of a chicken and the egg thing. Food truck vendors are not asking us to come into the city. Businesses are looking at using them to either as accessory uses to support their business. Or in the case of a business like erratic ales, they use it on the weekends, not every weekend, but a number of weekends in the summer. For providing food with the entertainment that they also have.
And that's a, that, that benefits every.
And yes, that benefits everyone, so.
It's a, and we have the, actually, we've got that great example of the chuck wagon, which was the perfect from the side, from the roadside, I think, to the brick and mortar. Now they're back at roadside in front of tractor supply, so it's like, that's a great evolution of, but. So that is an interesting point, how you mentioned of the business owners and, and looking in, right, and. Yeah, it's a tricky issue, but I think involving the business owners, DDA and outside is, obviously, you guys already know that, and. All right, please. I'm hungry now, okay, so, uh, with that.
Which brings up another point.
You being hungry?
Would this be a special event?
There you go.
My retirement, a special event?
Uh, I, I, it.
Especially you.
It depends, if you're talking just the meeting. We couldn't support it. Public action, we don't get enough people.
Ah, interesting, all right, well, speaking of people, so citizens wishing to address the commission.
Yeah, that's what we need, we need a taco truck, that way everybody wants to come to our meeting.
Free tacos with public comment. Free taco with public comment? Okay, there you go. Being no one.
Um, no wait.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, election, yeah. Election of officers, that's right.
Oh, okay, well, we have to adjourn, we have to amend the agenda.
No, it was on the agenda, I printed out the wrong.
Well, that's why, okay. That's why, thanks.
Yes, it was in the digital one.
Okay.
And I printed out.
Guys?
That's all my.
So, uh. Okay, election of officers, so obviously we know the existing officer, we do this every year, but, but we can do it by secret ballot, we can do it.
Let's do it that way.
We can do it by secret ballot, we can do it by hands raised, so if somebody would like to make a nomination, obviously Chair, Vice Chair, Allison is the Secretary.
I moved to re-nominate Karen Slade.
Okay, so there, there's, all right, are, are, are you willing to keep serving, Tom?
Oh, sure.
All right, are you willing to keep serving?
Sure.
I know, it's a little intense at times, but one of the states, we both have to cancel, so she has to leave the meeting. Okay, and I'm viewing, so I guess with. With that. The Parks recommendation as well, thank you, so.
Let's finish this one.
Okay, let's finish this, you're right. I guess, do we need a roll call vote on that? Okay, so, all in favor of this slate as nominated, current terms, I get, no, current positions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, wow, thank you for your confidence again, always impressed, okay. So next, I, I always appreciate your support, everybody. So with that, do we have a nomination for a Parks advisory member for the, um, not advisory, Parks Commission member?
I'm nominating Karen.
I'll do it.
Okay, all right, is there a support? Okay, second, Karen, will you accept?
I accept.
Who is second, please?
Uh, Cardy?
Second.
Lou Phillips, um, all in favor of Karen Roberts as Parks representative, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations, Karen. All right, and now.
Hard fault.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah, nobody, okay, moved, I'll think, yes, all that. All right, support, I think Roberts, um, all in favor of adjournment, say aye, aye, opposed, non-beating is adjourned, thank you all.